We want elected officials to be there.
Yeah.
Welcome, everyone. Town Prescott Valley Works Study Meeting, April 18th, 2019. Clerk, will you please call the order?
Mayor Palguta.
President.
Vice Mayor Nye.
Here.
Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Grossman.
Still here.
Councilmember Mallory.
Here.
Councilmember Schumacher.
Here.
And Councilmember Packard.
Here.
We have a quorum, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Item three, presentation from Parks and Rec or for Parks and Rec Master Plan, Mike Svetz, Prose Consulting. And Mr. Whitty is here, I'm sure, for an intro.
We sure are. Give the council a little bit of a background in regards to this project, and then we'll introduce Mike to you all, and we'll follow through in his presentation. A little bit of background, back in May, Town Council, of course, approved the 2018-2019 budget fiscal year in which we began our process of engaging development and review for a Parks and Recreation Master Plan. January of this year, we disseminated a request for proposals to hire a consultant or team of consultants to prepare the Parks and Recreation Master Plan, and we indicated that it should be a shared process tapping the opinions and ideas of community stakeholders. Then, on March 4th, we received five qualifying proposals, and a six-member review panel was assembled, and they conducted numerical grading of each one of those proposals from the RFP. The top two scoring proposals were invited to present to that same panel, and they were also issued numerical grades. Prose Consulting demonstrated the knowledge and expertise to be the ideal professional service provider for this project, and Mike Svetz is with us this evening to review that proposal for your discussion and questions that might come from that. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mike.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor, council, thank you very much for the opportunity to discuss this with you. This is just going to kind of be a quick overview of the process that we will undertake in terms of developing the town's master plan. As Mr. Whitty had said, my name is Mike Svetz, I'm with Prose Consulting, but I'm also a recovering Parks and Recreation Director. Spent twenty-some years on their side of the table with tours of duty in Ohio, Virginia, Charlottesville, Virginia actually, and Arizona, down at Goodyear, Arizona. So, just very quickly, Prose is the prime for this project, as you know. We are a firm that has been in business since the mid-'90s, work all over the country, actually working in Rwanda, Africa right now, with regards to our project. So, our business is just parks and recreation. We do not dabble in anything else. Our partner in this process is Kim Lee Horn. They do have offices in Prescott, as well as in Phoenix. They will assist us primarily on the park and facility inventory and assessment component. And we also are engaging ETC Institute. They are a firm that we have worked with over the last nineteen years. Their business is statistically valid surveys, and they primarily do statistically valid surveys in two arenas. One is transportation, and the other one is parks and recreation. This will produce, and I'll touch on it in a little bit, but it will produce a statistically valid survey that reflects the needs of your community. So, our process, I will not read all of this to you, but we do root everything in community values. Why is that? Parks and Recreation is supposed to be used by your community, experienced by your community, and you have to have a system that meets the community needs and make sure that it's right-sized. We look at it through all of these different buckets, whether it's standards in terms of how you're operating and managing your system, levels of service, meaning basically how much stuff should you have? How many acres of parkland of, you know, neighborhood parks, community parks, different types of athletic fields, and so on and so forth, so that your system is right-sized and it's not overbuilt. Obviously, financial and revenue opportunities, we want to look at it through that lens. Partnerships, government, though you are primarily a full-service Parks and Recreation Department, meaning you provide a lot of the programs and services and facilities on your own, there are always opportunities, such as what you have with the Boys and Girls Club and the School District, to continue to expand programs and services without it always being on the backs of taxpayers. And governance and organization, simply, you need to be organized, you need to have the right governance structure in order to manage and operate a system. Simply, we want to get to understanding where you're at today. We know that you have a 2002 master plan. 2002 was a long time ago. I think Prescott Valley at that point was 12,000 folks. So, we do want to look at that plan, but very reflectively in terms of what you did with it, and not necessarily using a lot of information from it, because it's a very different time and day, seventeen years later. Determine where you're going based on the community's needs, and more importantly, how do we get there strategically? We will have a holistic community input process. Spent a little bit of time actually already talking about how to do this, and our processes are face-to-face, electronically, digitally, website development, statistically valid surveys. But we really want to create curiosity about the plan. We want to be clear about what the plan is and what the plan is not. Sometimes when people think Parks and Recreation Master Plans, they think you're going to go through a site-specific park development process. That's not what this plan is, though it may end up recommending those kind of improvements. We want to instill confidence in it. We want to ensure that the community knows that they've been heard, and that we are going to take the appropriate steps and implementation strategies to ensure that what we heard about their needs actually has the opportunity to be implemented, and we want to be creative. As I mentioned, we have a lot of different tools in the toolkit to be able to engage the public, and it will be a very holistic process. As I mentioned, we are going to do that statistically valid survey. The survey will be done in partnership with the town in terms of the development of it. Simply, a statistically valid survey needs to be demographically and geographically representative of your community. This will be a very data-driven process, and you will end up with at least 375 surveys completed. Those folks that respond to that survey are responding on behalf of themselves and members of their household. But because it has to be demographically and geographically balanced, it will be reflective of the overall community values as it relates to parks and recreation. Confidence level is simply, if you did the survey 100 times, you would get the same results 95 out of 100 times. As far as a engagement process, so, a master plan has a lot of moving parts, and we want to ensure that we bring the information back to you as it unfolds. Master plan, 150, 200-page document, really difficult to wrap your brain around if we don't bring the information back to you in stages. And so, that's our commitment, not just with Town Council, but with Parks and Recreation Commission, Art and Culture Commission, as well as the community as a whole. The information will build upon itself, so that when we get to the end, I don't want to say it's going to be rubber stamped, but we shall have had the opportunity to answer questions, provide feedback along the way, so that when the plan is completed, it simply is completed, without a whole lot of questions or concerns related to it. We will do, as I mentioned, an existing conditions assessment. We need to get your inventory correct. We need to know how much infrastructure, and I think sometimes when we think parks and recreation, we don't think of the assets that you actually have in your system. You likely have multimillion dollars' worth of assets, and we need to know what that inventory is, and we need to be able to assess it as well, because as we know about assets, it's no different than cars, it's no different than roofs, it's no different than carpeting, flooring. It needs to be replaced. And parks and recreation systems that are in dire need of what we call lifecycle replacement are typically parks and recreation systems that don't get used a lot, simply because they're not safe and not in repair. We will conduct a program assessment. I will not dive into this too deeply, but it will be done in conjunction with the department to ensure that you have programs that are meeting the community's needs, and the standards and procedures by which they are delivered meet best practice. As I mentioned, we will develop data-driven priorities, community needs, both for programs and services, as well as facilities and amenities. We will do this for parks and recreation. We will do this also for your art and culture and special events as well. We in turn will establish your current level of service for not just park acreage and the different types of parks, but for playgrounds, basketball courts, tennis courts, athletic fields, based on the community's needs, as well as equity mapping to give you an understanding of how your system is distributed throughout your community, so that it's not overloaded in any one specific geographical part of your community. We want to understand what the gaps are. We also want to understand where the overlaps are. We will then establish a recommended level of service, and this becomes a very strong planning tool in terms of future park development. Parks have classifications. A park is not a park is not a park. Pocket parks are different than neighborhood parks, which are different than community parks, and we need to make sure that you have the right mix, so that parks are not being used for the wrong reasons, underdeveloped, overdeveloped. This is really, really critical. It will give us an understanding of where you have needs today, but also projecting where you have needs in the future, in particular, not just for park acreage, but for the amenities in your park system as well. Are you short on athletic fields? Do you have too many tennis courts that could be converted into pickleball courts, for example? So that is the exercise that we will go through. We will develop a capital improvement plan, but we will do this under total cost of ownership. Capital improvements, plus the operations and maintenance needed to sustain those capital improvements, as well as lifecycle replacement. We will divide your capital improvement plan up into three buckets. Just a lifecycle replacement bucket, opportunities to expand services within your existing park system, including such things as loop trails or picnic shelters, as well as then new development. We will develop a funding strategy specific to your plan and specific to the town, so that we know that the capital improvement plan is implementable, so that we're not bringing to you a bunch of visionary projects that have no opportunity to actually implement it in ten years. So, implementing the plan, one of the drawbacks of implementing a plan is having the organizational capacity to do that. We will ensure our best efforts to try to make sure that the organizational structure of the department is aligned in such a way that it actually can implement the recommendations from the plan. And we will in turn develop an action plan matrix that really dives into all of the individual actions, tactics, strategies, and who's involved in implementing those for you. Questions?
I have two. You commented about the holistic approach, which I love, but what does holistic mean to you?
Holistic means that we need to provide your community a lot of different opportunities to engage in the process, and whether that means people coming to us, whether that means us going to people, whether that means the development of a website in which people can participate and provide their comments that way, whether it's the statistically valid survey, and bringing the information, as I mentioned, back to the public in stages to get their feedback and get their input completely along the way. The statistically valid survey does a great job of making sure that park users, as well as non-users or potential users, are represented as part of it.
Will that include approaching or providing an opportunity to the various cultures here to have some public meetings or something, that they can have input?
Absolutely. I mean, I think one of the things, very first off the bat, that we need to establish is exactly what that looks like. And so, establishing a community engagement strategy, community engagement plan is very critical. We have a very initial framework of doing that in May, provided you approve the contract, but we need to build on that as we go forward.
Okay. My final comment and question is, you really grabbed me when you included arts and culture, of course, everybody knows that about me. What kind of approach, because it's an overwhelming job just to do Parks and Rec, so how much energy and time will be put into arts and culture?
Well, arts and culture is a community service, and so whether that is programs and services, or whether it's a public art program, it kind of falls into the same realm, because art is one of those things that is experienced, and parks and recreation is something that is experienced. The one thing that we know about art, it creates conversation, one way or the other. But it also has an educational component, a historical component, cultural components to it as well. And so, we need to make sure that when we start talking about the needs of your community, that you have an opportunity to reflect those needs in an artistic way, and that can be through celebrations, that could be through special events, that could be through programming, and it could be through fixed public art.
So, like the parks, you will be appraising what we currently have in our arts and culture programs and giving us feedback?
Exactly.
Okay. Thank you.
Sir, what's your timeframe look like, from the time you start to when you expect to be?
We have to be done by June 4th of next year, but based on the schedule that we have laid out, we should be able to be done within ten months, nine, I mean, at the very latest, I think we're coming back to you in a year from now.
Mr. Tarkowski?
Yeah. Just had a question. I'm really glad, I'd like to compliment you on going ahead and having a document that will be fiscally constrained, rather than pie in the sky, not to throw rocks at the '02 or '03 study. There are things that are left undone, because it was not fiscally constrained. But I do have a question, and that is, we have assets that are serving the community in terms of recreational opportunities that do not belong to the Town of Prescott Valley, they belong to HOAs.
Correct.
I'd say, for example, we have one municipal swimming pool, although I think we have seven or eight pools in town serving HOA communities, our master plan communities. How do you figure that into your calculations?
We have to figure it in, because when we start talking about level of service, level of service is simply not just what the town is providing to your community, but what are all of the other publicly accessible opportunities that exist? So, one of the things that this comes up quite often in the work that we do is we establish what your inventory is, but we also establish what the other publicly accessible inventory is. So, whether it's swimming pools, whether it's athletic fields, so long as that inventory is publicly accessible.
Okay. Well, that reanalyses my question.
Correct.
These are not publicly accessible, but they are serving a need of essentially thousands of our citizens.
Exactly.
But they are not publicly accessible, unless you are a member of that community.
Correct. And I think swimming pools are a little bit different than, say, fitness facilities.
Fitness courts.
Exactly. And so, we need to understand what that inventory is, who it is serving. I will go back to simply say that we need to make sure that we have a system that is financially sustainable, that is right-sized for you.
And I think that's important, because if we look on paper, tennis courts, I believe, throughout, if we look at how many tennis courts are in Prescott Valley, I believe all of them are in an HOA. I'm trying to think if there's an actual public.
School district.
Okay. The schools, yes.
Right.
That's the only spot that doesn't have one, or that's the only spot that has one, as opposed to the number of HOAs. So, we just want to make sure that that equation doesn't get diluted.
Yeah, and I think the one thing that, and this really will help, and I wish I could spend a little bit more time on the survey, but one of the things that we talk about on the survey is not just what's important and needed in the community, but also where unmet needs are. So, something can be important and needed, but if there's enough programs or there's enough inventory in the community to meet that need, then we recognize that you don't have to invest in it. And so, the survey will really tease that information out, and it goes a long way to informing your levels of service, so that we don't run into a situation where we overbuild the system, or we miss opportunities to make sure that, for example, to use your, Mayor, to use your tennis court example, there may be a ton of tennis courts, but one of the most emerging sports in the country is pickleball. It may be one of those things where we need to look at pickleball in place of tennis courts, and maybe that's something that the town doesn't have control over in terms of converting tennis courts to pickleball courts, but maybe that's something that the town invests in.
Thank you.
What I just wanted to ask, I mean, you know, throughout the town, we have all these planned communities. Now, granted, you have to live in the communities to be able to use the gyms or the pools. But when I think of parks that are built in the planned communities, I actually see that as a public service. Is that incorrect or not?
Essentially, I think that helps take the pressure off of the municipal services, okay? And it just needs to be factored into the analysis that's done.
Correct. I think the statement that I made about a park is not a park is not a park. So, those neighborhood parks and those pocket parks do go a long way to meeting that specific level of need. But you would not put, for example, athletic fields on those parks.
No.
So, your level of investment may not necessarily need to be on the neighborhood side of the equation, but we need to make sure that impact fees and credits are collected and are not overly generous in terms of providing credits, so that you can't meet the community park need, where you need larger tracts of land that require parking, that require restrooms, that require larger space amenities. And so, there's a balancing act with regards to all of this, absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
I really enjoyed the slide presentation.
Thank you.
One of the slides that caught my attention was the one that you have the equity maps and to show the gaps.
Yes.
Now, based on that, I'm guessing that each park, based on its size and amenities, will attract from a different area than a larger park that has more amenities.
You're spot-on. So, it's a double, there's two variables associated with it. One is, so just using parks as an example, but we will do this for amenities as well, basketball courts, athletic fields, so on and so forth. But there's two variables. One is the size of the acreage of the park, and the other is the density of the population around it. So, you will end up with different size of circles based on, you have a five-acre park, but maybe you have 10,000 people living within, you know, that five acres, or living within that, and maybe it's a really, really small circle, versus if you have five-acre park, but you only have 500 people living, you don't have a lot of density, then that circle will end up being bigger. When we get to that, I will certainly do my very best to use your system as examples to walk you through that. The other thing I think is really critical about the equity mapping is you can't put parks everywhere. You have land use, you have zoning, and so you are going to have gaps in your system, just simply because you don't put parks in, you don't have opportunities to put parks in every part of your community.
Yeah. The other question I have for you is, you were talking about doing a survey.
Yes.
Will the survey be conducted either through mail or email, or will it be a phone survey?
So, if you're interested, I can send you a three-page ad nauseam document about the administration process of it, but I can tell you that the firm that has done this is very, very reputable. People will have, not everybody will receive a survey, number one, but number two, people will have the opportunity to respond either via mail, web, online, or they can do it by phone, and if required, we can absolutely do it in different languages as well.
Thank you.
And can I ask, how long is the survey? Like, how many questions?
Usually, they are 20 to 25 questions, takes 15 minutes, 20 minutes tops. I will say that we will not be conducting that survey until probably after kids go back to school and life kind of returns to normal, so to speak, because trying to do it during the summer would just be an unmitigated disaster. So, it'll likely be sometime in late August or shortly after Labor Day when we do that. But we will be back in front of you probably soon. Because trying to do it during the summer would just be an unmitigated disaster. So, it'll likely be sometime in late August or shortly after Labor Day when we do that. But we will be back in front of you, probably assuming, again, you approve the contract, we would be back in front of you with the initial community engagement, as well as the technical findings, probably back in August.
Okay, great, thank you.
When you dig into this, you'll find that we're setting aside a large area for a regional park.
Yes.
Which, at this point, I think we're still calling our free park. Well, information, will that be included in this assessment?
Yes. What that will do is that will inform, not to get too technical, but there's park acreage that's developed, and then there's undeveloped park acreage. So, what I showed you is that you potentially have unmet needs, but by developing acreage that you already own, it lessens the burden for quote-unquote "future land acquisition" or future park development.
Okay.
That will be factored in.
When you're dealing with that, how will you go about citizens understanding the difference with the regional park than town parks?
There's an education process associated with what we call park classifications. So, as I mentioned, pocket parks are different than neighborhood parks, which are different than community parks, and so on. So, there will be that education process as we go through it. And when I mentioned, just to hammer home this point, when I mentioned being very clear about what this project is, it's a system-wide plan. What this project is not is to not develop a conceptual, or redevelop a conceptual master plan for that site. The information derived from this process will inform how best to develop that property, then it becomes a living project on its own later on.
All right. Sir, thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
All right, move on to item four, emergency evacuation. Mr. Gary Davis? Or Mr. Richard Parker?
I'll be standing in for Gary tonight.
Mayor Council, you're aware, in January, you directed that we look into emergency evacuation provisions in the town of Prescott Valley. Over the course of the last several months, we've come up with some strategies, done exhaustive inventories, and we took the first step, if you recall, in February. We came back to you with amendments to town code, enabling the mayor, as part of his responsibilities, when declaring emergencies, enable evacuation processes to proceed unfettered. That's because of laws in the state of Arizona that enable people to cross private property, undertake Herculean, in some cases, undertakings to make sure that the public is safe. We have drafted a draft emergency evacuation plan, and I say "we." Gary Davis has been the point person on this from my staff. We've also consulted with CAFMA, the Fire Marshal, as well as Yabapai County Emergency Services, the County Board of Supervisors, the town's police department, Yabapai County Sheriff's Department, and as I think I mentioned, Yabapai County Emergency Management, to put together information that would be used for developing this plan document. We found, in doing some of that research, that there's a lot of information available to us, and we've tried to involve this into this draft plan. The plan document identifies a number of potential access points, access routes that take people from inhabited locations to uninhabited locations, some of which are existing easements, some of which are routes that begin at the terminus of a public roadway. It may not necessarily be improved, but may be made available by emergency services when and if necessary. This is an area largely to the north. We cut it in a north and south configuration as part of the plan, so that people can look at them as it relates to their geographic area. They've been identified, again, as available, a priority location, and in future study, future study may involve confirming or providing easements across private property, and we attempt to prioritize those as part of the planning document. Gary did a really good job, and I need to say that a couple of times, because I kept thinking he was just going out in the field and hanging out, but he was going out in the field and taking photographs, identifying spatially and via maps where those locations were. And he put them on something that I appreciate with my old eyes, that something is legible. So, somebody can look at a one-page as it relates to their location, as opposed to something that is so busy that you can't really discern what's going on. So, he's done a good job in identifying, this particular one is at the terminus of Parkview Drive, and you'll notice that beyond that, you can see a two-track, well, that two-track has been used by a rancher over time, and we've coordinated with that property owner, most recently, to try to work with them about their development scenario, and have worked to acquire a right-of-way similar to Parkview. If you look at the big picture and you look at the town's general plan, the circulation element relies on this road, as well as one further to the north, as a big part of the circulation element, bringing traffic out to the future extension of Glassford Hill Road. In the interim, that's not available, but one of the strategies is to work with the property owner so as to define an access route across private property that may be made easily available in the time of need as part of an emergency. In order to look at where we may prioritize, I was very pleased to see that Yabapai County has a strategic rating of wildfire hazards in our area. And the areas that are most prevalent or prominent for our review is around Stone Ridge, and that's because they have a great deal of fuels that could be made available for wildfires. In looking at that and talking with both fire management folks, as well as others, we find that the day before our open house, the Stone Ridge folks are doing a get-together regarding firewise. Firewise means you protect your structure with sufficient space and separation to the wildland, so that you have a chance to be able to protect your property. So, we're inviting them to the proper process as well, and we'll have information at our open house regarding how you can work on your own or collectively in a group to make your community more firewise. And I'm very pleased to let you know that CAFMA will be at that meeting, Yabapai Emergency Services will be at that meeting. I'm understanding that a couple of county supervisors may be at that meeting, and representatives from the county Public Works Department. The reason why that's important is we live in a sea of Yabapai County, and many of the areas adjacent to the municipal lands that we supervise are in the county. So, I'm very pleased to see that they have committed to participate in that process. So, in looking at priorities, we're looking at areas that have fireloads, and where we may prioritize first and foremost, how we would get people from those areas. Then, of course, looking at other opportunities where grasslands intersect private properties, they burn at a different rate, and the Fire Marshal can talk a little bit about that during our public hearing. So, our public hearing has been scheduled. We're going to get a couple of newspaper articles out on Tuesday, May 7th. It's an open house. It's going to be conducted with several professionals, with a whole bunch of storyboards, talking about where we are, where we hope to be in the future, and that'll be 5:30 to 7:30. It's done as an open house, so that there's not just one person up there speaking. If people have questions regarding the Fire Marshal's comment, he'll have a station. You can talk to them about firewise, what CAFMA can do, what an incident commander is charged with, when and if there is wildfire in any area, what they can and cannot do. And I'm finding out more and more, as I experience this process, that a fire commander has considerable resources made available to them and can direct people to leave. In turn, we're going to make available the webpages where people can register for emergency notification, so in the case of an emergency, they can receive notification on how best to proceed. Most recently, with a wildfire up by Viewpoint, a lot of people left. Unfortunately, for some, they felt like they were panicking, and actually, had they been part of that service, they would have been instructed to shelter in place, because the wildfire that was going through was being contained by emergency services, because it was a grass fire. So, we're going to be making that information available, having people sign up for those emergency evacuation or emergency notification services that are made available via the town of Prescott Valley. With that, I've given you a general overview. Again, we intend to build on this planning document over the course of many years, as infrastructure becomes available, or opportunity to work with property owners, whether in the county, or in conjunction with development scenarios that we receive, and expect that it'll be a fluid document that will be implemented over time. With that, I would respond to your questions.
I just want to say that I'm really happy about what Stone Ridge is doing. I hope that other HOAs follow through in the communities and get together. This is a great document that has come up, and the process we're doing is excellent for everybody. But once again, as we always encourage, as a community, always have your own plan as well. You need to also be able to understand what your process will be going forward. So, keep informative with all of the things that the town is offering, the county is offering, and our first responders are offering. Thank you for this. It's very good.
And we'll be back probably with a follow-up after the open house to let you know how it goes.
I'm looking forward to having the open house and getting the document, but I think having the document is going to bring peace of mind to a whole bunch of people, just knowing that there's something in place, and they have something to refer to. So, that's going to be great.
And again, I appreciate Gary's work. He was very diligent about that. Come in early, leave late. I thought it was just like hanging out, but again, he's been exhaustive in his efforts, and my compliments.
I did have one question real quick, too. Is there a way that we can invite owners of the HOA or presidents of each HOA to that meeting, so that they also see that the citizens are concerned in certain areas? I know in Granville, we have a tumbleweed population like you can't believe, and that we were told that a lot of stuff had to stay natural, but natural's not when tumbleweeds fly into your backyard and land in your trees, you know? So, and I know firewise, I would like a lot of what's there present to maybe be thinned out. So, I didn't know if that's something we could reach out to them as well.
We could certainly do our best. I'm aware of a lot of homeowner associations, as is Ryan. Heidi can help us make notice of that. We're going to do a couple of stories in the newspapers to advise people of, this meeting is going to be posted on our webpage and hopefully advertised. We hope we have a good turnout. And again, the reason why we're trying to do it as an open house is to get as much specific information, specific to people's needs, that they want to hear. The other thing, and this is maybe to springboard on Mary's comment, you have a personal responsibility to help take care of your property, which means you don't have weeds, which means we don't send a code enforcement officer out there to remind you that you need to take care of your weeds, and some other things, where you store materials, where you store wood, things like that, that if you're aware of and informed about, you may stand a whole lot better chance of not having a problem if there is a fire in your area. I'll tell a quick story regarding my own circumstance. Years ago, they were walking around in my neighborhood, distributing these small eight-and-half-by-eleven photographs, aerial photographs that they had pirated from Yabapai County, just when GIS was coming vogue. And my wife explained to me that she'd really like to have a nice photograph of our home, aerial photograph, and I was taken back about how heavily concentrated vegetation was on the hillside behind my home. And while fire doesn't move downhill very quickly, it does move uphill very quickly. And just that year, the fire at White Spar happened, and a bunch of people's homes burnt. So, I was reminded by my insurance company that they may cancel my insurance because I was in an urban land, wildland interface area. So, I took that to heart, and I worked to denude my hillside of scrub oak, and then I put a 2,500-gallon water tank on top of my hill with a manifold system and a sprinkler system, and I engaged my insurance company, and they reduced my insurance by 20%. So, again, taking steps on your own, in my instance, really improved my situation, because over time, it paid for the improvements that I undertook.
I just wanted to make this comment. We have always had emergency evacuation asset access, and many of our citizens didn't know and didn't understand it. So, that's another plus to this. Not only have we, you know, advertised all of this, but a great deal of thought and effort has been into secure additional.
And I was very pleased to see that the county is up to date with their--
Right.
--information. And I was also pleased that we piqued the interest of the County Board of Supervisors. At least, they're going to be there and talk a little bit about some solutions that they may help us in bringing to the citizenry.
Yeah, I just don't want our citizens to think that we haven't always been concerned about this, because we always have.
Go ahead, sir.
Richard, I'm really surprised. I thought you were going to say that you were surprised with that aerial photograph, that you had as much junk as you did.
Yeah, yeah.
Mayor Council, would you be in favor of us allocating some funds out of contingency? I suspect it'll be less than $6,000. To go ahead and using an election approach of sending out a flyer to all of the occupants that live in Prescott Valley, okay, that would go ahead and encourage them, one, to be firewise and clean up their property, but number two, encourage them to sign up for Nixle, and, it's not Redbox, it's CodeRed, and to get them to do that. Now, we have taken out advertisements in the Prescott Valley Tribune last year, but it seems that when we talk about CodeRed or Nixle, there's way too many people, that their eyes roll back in their head and they say, "What?" And it would be really useful if everybody was signed up on both of those platforms, or at least one of them.
I personally think that anything and everything that we can do to keep repeating ourselves about what's available for this community, and to make them aware, and to take an effort on their own responsibility, that we should do that. Because, you know, it's important, and they don't always get the message, and so, we need to keep repeating it, and it's worth it.
And what Larry's speaking about is similar to an Amber Alert that you would receive on your telephone, and it would advise when you're going to be receiving additional information and keep you up to date. I have it on my telephone through the county, and I'm advised of things that affect not only my neighborhood, but also countywide.
Do we have a current count of who's registered for Nixle?
Say that again?
Is there a current, do we have a current subscription number for--
I'll look into it and find out.
Who in the town has signed up for that?
We can find out, yeah.
Yeah.
And one other thing, some people don't always know this, but some areas in our community are not even in fire districts. And at that point, you need to be purchasing or buying into a fire district. And that's another subject, I think, that even though that isn't what we have going on here in our county area, right here in Prescott Valley, or Prescott, or those, but some people don't understand that either. And that's not a bad subject to just touch base on. And that's not a bad subject to just touch base on. Knowledge is power.
Well, and just again, to remind everybody here that anything within the town of Prescott Valley is in a fire district, but that's outside of the CAFMA boundaries, just adjacent to, in some instances, the town. There are areas that are not subject to service by CAFMA. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next up, discussion of the sidewalk project, engineering manager, Ron Pine. Welcome, sir.
Mayor Council, good evening. For some of you, I have probably a new face. I'm Ron Pine. I'm the Engineering Division Manager, and I'm located up in Public Works. And the Civic Drive project will be one of the projects that I'll be managing. It's a community development block grant-funded project, and I want to thank Ryan Judy, who through his efforts has delivered, I believe, the third or fourth year in a row, development block grant for us to do projects. And I think the best way to just kind of explain the project is to show you a couple of the previous projects that we have done, similar in scope, similar components. And this one right here is Lake Valley, and you'll see the improvements are to the west side of the road, and that's what Civic Drive will encompass. The improvements will only be on the west side of the road. This, in this project, we added an additional lane, curb gutter and widened sidewalk, and street lighting. And I want to bring your attention to the street lighting because this is one of the components that will be on Civic Drive. It's a saucer-shaped fixture. We call it a bagelite, and they're common in pretty much what we use in the downtown area. So we will have those along Civic Drive, and also there'll be one right on Scoog Boulevard, right near the corner.
So they're clearly dark sky compliant.
They are, yes. And they're all LED as well.
Thank you.
So this is really going to be really close to what we're going to be doing right here. And this is long look. This is a 2018 project. The previous one was 2017. And so what we're going to do with Civic Drive is we're going to widen the west side of the existing roadway and, so that we can accommodate a three-lane roadway throughout that corridor from Winsong all the way to Scoog Boulevard. So it'll be just like this. And you can see here where we widened the existing roadway a little bit, then we added curb gutter and sidewalk so we could accommodate that three-lane configuration. So what you're going to see on Civic Drive is what you see right there.
Will there be a bike lane?
There will be a bike lane. And you see here, right here, that we have the widened shoulder to eventually accommodate that. Once we can get that full connectivity where we can start striping those in, yes. So this was early on when we were trying to figure out budgeting and everything, because we do have a match and we're going to use her funding for our match. We have the 300 in the grant funding. And so you notice there was a little section right there on Scoog Boulevard that was going to be undeveloped between the school and, you know, where the improvements are at right there. And Ryan noticed that that county lot, that's a lot that's owned by the county. So we went and approached the county, and Ryan worked closely with Phil Bordon and Kenny Van Kieren and Supervisor Jack Smith, and they were able to come up with $106,000 towards the project so that we could actually include improvements on Scoog Boulevard. And those will mirror the improvements that are right in front of the school right there. We'll have some additional pavement. There'll be angled parking, curb gutter and sidewalk. There'll be a driveway entrance for that lot right there so that, you know, that lot can be used for whatever the county deems. And there'll also be a street light right there. And this is just a mock-up of the project sign that we're going to have out on the project. And it just shows all the partners there. We're showing the contractor. We anticipate award to the low bidder, which is Copper State, Kim Lee Horn, the engineer, Arizona Department of Housing, and Yavapai County as well. So we're really looking forward to the project. I enjoy these little, these little grant-funded projects. They're nice. Last item in closing is just, you do have the council action in front of you. We did open bids April 8th. We had six bidders. Some of the bids were pretty close, very close to the engineer's estimate, within a couple thousand dollars. So that's what we like to see. The low bidder was Copper State, and their figure was 526, 143, and 70 cents. And so we'll be before you again next week, we'll do another brief presentation and ask that you award the construction contract to Copper State. Questions?
I don't have any questions, Ron, but I'd like to say, one of the reasons the county supervisors were willing to put in funds is they still plan to put a county building there. And I was just talking to four of them just a couple of days ago, and they assured me that that plan is probably intact and sooner than we think. So I'd like to know what that means sooner than they think.
Well, I couldn't answer that.
Well, let me just expand on that a little bit so people will understand why I'm bringing it up. We here in Prescott Valley, when we have to deal with the county, we have to drive a long way to get to any of their buildings. So after all, we're the largest community here. It's time that they started providing services here.
Absolutely. Anyone?
Sir? Thank you. Moving on, item six, discussion of the census 2020. Looks like Richard's back.
While we're getting set up, you know, if we waited until the county developed their property, because of our off-site improvement standards, they'd have to do the improvements anyway, as well as all the way along loose, so they should not look a gift horse.
You got that right.
Some of you have seen this, but I want to give you an update where we are and where we're headed. I was thinking before the presentation, this will be the third census that I've been involved with in Prescott Valley, and it's the fourth census that I've been involved in in Yavapai County.
Still haven't gotten a run.
Yeah, Larry and I've got a little wager, and I'm looking forward to rubbing his nose in it. It involves pie. I'll rub his nose in pie. In that case, the professional staff have worked together to come up with a plan, and that plan relates to how we get the word out for census and how we can engage people to know how important it is. And I did this presentation at a recent smorgasbord, and I cut it down, but the big deal is funding for municipalities like the town come from the feds and the state based on the population numbers that we develop as part of a decadal census, which is provided in the U.S. Constitution. And they distributed a lot of money. And we are growing, and as a result of our continued growth, it is obviously advantageous that we get the best calculation of those people that live here, as well as the demographic that constitutes Prescott Valley. And this talks a little about the census being conducted, how it's being conducted. This is a timeline, and something that I wasn't aware of until I watched a recent presentation by ICMA, was instead of waiting until April 1st, which is Census Day, the census date you can start filling out online census is March. And many of you were at the Chamber breakfast the other day, and you heard from Casey, and Casey talked about the services that you can get at the library. So fortunately, one of our staff professionals that's been helping us with this is Casey, because we're going to be doing a lot of work in the library trying to get the word out, and hopefully she will have a bank of computers and a bunch of librarians there to help people go to the census and fill out that census beginning March 1st, as opposed to the official date, which is April 1st. So we've backed into that with a strategy or written document that you have copies of, which talks about local service agencies, churches, a variety of other groups that we're going to be making contact with, Hispanic newspapers, lots of avenues. I think Marty brought up the post office. We've coordinated recently with them as well, so that we get the word out and we do the best we possibly can. This is kind of a timeline showing the process, the fact that once reminders go out and so forth, you have approximately a month and a half window to answer the census, and that 95% of the people, they anticipate, are going to do that online, which is an improvement over the past. Approximately 5% may do it via paper, and then less than 1%, people are going to follow up and knock on the door and through census enumerators, gather that information. This slide shows a little bit about some of the dollars where they go, where they can be made available, and certainly Prescott Valley will benefit from a good count. This shows Prescott and Prescott Valley's populations, one that was also projected in 2017. This shows the pie throughout Yavapai County, where those dollars go, and the unincorporated balance of the county over time gets smaller and smaller, and the municipal portion gets bigger and bigger. 2010, you can see that Prescott Valley was just shy of Prescott, and certainly by the next census 2020, we will eclipse, obviously, Prescott officially, as we have done in estimates in 2017. So I've given you an overview. If you'd like to look at the information that we provided you, it's rather detailed with contacts and so forth. CASA, I can't say enough about the Chamber of Commerce. They were a big player last time around, and they have willingly enlisted their participation, and we're going to be looking to them as well. If any of you as council members or mayor, if you'd like to go out into the community and you have people who would like us to go talk to them, we'd be happy to do that or we'll provide information to you so you can distribute it to your constituents. With that, I'll respond to any questions you may have.
I do know that at least in Granville, we have the Granville Gazette, so that would be another great way. Each community development has their own little newspaper that goes out. I think that would be wonderful to get this in that for them, and definitely showing up for meetings throughout these developments and areas. I'd love to participate, anything I can do to make sure we get the numbers right.
I'd like to particularly comment and compliment our library. This is a comfortable, safe place for a lot of people to come to, and I think they're going to make a big difference in this census by volunteering to be so supportive. And so I know I'm here frequently, and I'm always stunned how many people are at those computers. So I'll be very surprised if they don't carry a heavy load.
Well, and I was recently informed at the Chamber breakfast, and I'm going to take advantage of, next time I get a new phone, I'm going right to the library and let them help me figure it out.
Yeah.
Well, you definitely can do it.
I went through the paperwork that Ryan, excuse me, that Ryan had given to us, and it's pretty extensive. And what's in there regarding how we're going to get the word out is impressive. So we're going to do everything that's humanly possible to get the word out, and after that, it's just up to the people to fill it out. And I saw all the connections with the Hispanic community and other communities that might be a little hesitant to fill out government paperwork. So it was impressive, and I think we're going to get a good count this year.
Well, we're going to really kick it in gear the first part of the year, first part of January. We're going to ask the mayor to do a year proclamation, the year of the census, and you may get really tired of me continually talking about this, but it's important. I know that when we had the most recent anniversary of Prescott Valley, membership on the council was really good about keeping that word out there and alive, and I'm hoping you'll do the same thing. This is really important.
It's important for us to say we were undercounted last time. We don't know by how many, but that's not going to happen again.
I think it was less a product of being undercounted and more the fact that we were in the Great Recession.
The vacancies, yeah.
And a 12% vacancy rate is a historic low here, and I think that we're going to make up a bunch of people, because I don't think we have anywhere near a 12% vacancy rate.
Yeah, thank you, because we were on top of it, and I was very anxious a month ago, and now I'm not anxious anymore.
Exit stage right.
Excellent, thank you, sir. Are you up here for number seven, too?
Oh, yeah.
Building code update?
Building code.
Like, this is the night of Richard Parker.
Well, they usually don't stack me up on the agenda. They usually, like, put me first and last, and maybe they did that this time. Mayor Council, periodically, a professional group that promulgates building codes come together. It's an international group, and they put forth their best efforts based on changing technologies that are emerging in the trades, and they put together codes that they believe proffer safe and well-built structures. So periodically, we review those codes, and through a board that you oversee, the Building Board of Appeals, which is comprised of technical folks, architects, engineers, builders, and that kind of profession, and they convene and they look at these codes. We also have, over the course of the many code adoptions, tried to work with our neighbors so that a contractor is working off the same sheet of music figuratively in the town of Prescott Valley that they may do in Yavapai County. Over time, we've been somewhat successful, and this time, I think, we've been the most successful. We slowed down our process, meaning the town. We were ready to have this come to you in January, and we elected to wait because the Contractors Association said, "We want you all to get together." So we've been playing nice with everybody for the last nine months. Woody and Warren have been out to many, many, many meetings. We've held meetings here at the Civic Center. The mayor was very kind enough to buy pizza for people who wanted to show up and talk about codes. Thank you. And I'll make sure that I put dollars in my budget next year for the pizza. But in any case, I appreciate that, mayor. We've had a pretty good response. The good thing about the most recent updated codes is they're simplified, and that's an unusual thing in the building trades. In looking at analysis that has been done by several professional trade organizations, they believe the adoption of the 2018 codes as compared to the 2012 codes that we currently administer will save approximately $2,000 per residential unit in construction costs. And this is the first time in my career, and I've done this for quite a while, where I've seen cost savings result as a result of changes to a building code. Other aspects of the code, though, we have elected and we've recommended to the Building Board of Appeals. They've held at least three work studies. I've attended those work studies and listened to the dialogue. And they were split up until last week on whether or not they wanted to recommend adoption of the most recent energy codes. The most recent energy codes, the staff believe, are redundant, because you can't go out and buy a regular toilet anymore that flushes three and four gallons. You can't go out and buy an inefficient water heater anymore. They're not available in the marketplace. Likewise, with HVAC systems, heating and cooling, you can't go buy energy inefficient units. So we've recommended, and through the work study, the board, I think, agreed, and they're going to be making a recommendation to you next week regarding adoption of those codes. We contemplated that to take place, and if that is the case, we're bringing them to you first meeting in May, or the second reading later in May. first meeting in May or the second reading later in May and implementation July 1st. Because we administer a large number of master plans, Granville alone has 27 different floor plans that they offer. We're not going to rush in and obligate those master plans to be updated within a very short window. Rather, we're going to work with them and cause that to take place no later than January 1st. That doesn't prevent them from bringing master plans forward that are done to the 2018 code, our review and our release of permits based on the 2018. So it gives a flex period of time for us to review information and be accountable to our customer, but in turn have the development community not be under the gun in trying to meet a very short timeframe. We believe that that's a fair and reasonable approach. We have had a lot of good feedback. That will culminate in a recommendation from the Building Board of Appeals and then they can go back to sleep for the next four years unless they get a application for a appeal, which is a rarity as well. But again, very good work for that board, I very much appreciate that. And we'll conclude with a recommendation to you in hopes that you will approve their recommendation beginning first, the first meeting of May.
I know council member Schumacher and I attended one of the meetings regarding the construction updates and I found, well, for me, it was because of my work with Habitat, but it was extremely, you know, there was a lot of good information there. I picked up one of the booklets, so, for Habitat. Anyway, there were a lot of people there that were really good explaining what was going on and how the changes are going to affect everything. And I'm looking forward to seeing it and working with it. So, thank you.
Well, one thing again, the building cones are a minimum standard that you need to meet. And in our discussions with the Building Board of Appeals, that doesn't prevent somebody to install a greater R value in their wall. If they want to meet a R37 in their wall, there's technologies within a two by six wall where you can achieve that. But you're not burdening everybody to adopt that standard. Statistically now, people are back to living in a house typically no more than five years. So the investment that they would make if we adopt 2018 energy standard, they would never recoup during their residency within that property. Rather, it would be an over 20-year period of time that they may recoup the additional cost of the additional improvements. That is not the case with solar technologies. And again, that's not something that's mandated by current codes, but the installation of solar technologies, the return on investment is much quicker.
Well, just to give you an example of recouping, a few years ago, when Energy Star was giving rebates and stuff, we had the guy come out and we were building homes that were exceeding the minimum standard by 33%, which was huge. I mean, if you ever see the home improvement shows and they say, you know, you could heat this, this house with a candle, ours were almost that tight. So, yeah, it was, it was good to see.
I'd respond to questions if not.
Thank you, Richard. You're certainly leading the way in Yavapai County with what you guys do down there in regards to permits and just getting plans back. It is truly impressive. I hear from contractors and myself, I've seen it, where you guys, no one can touch what Prescott Valley does for plan review and that's, that's impressive.
And I appreciate hearing that from you, mayor. And something that I'm proud of is these guys carry cell phones. They answer the phone, not while they're driving, but they answer the telephone. And having constructed things in other jurisdictions, you can't get in touch with a guy and/or gal that's doing the inspections. And they pick up the telephone and call their customer and say, "Can you come look at this thing so I can pass it, so I can move on?" As opposed to going back the next day. And that's customer service and that's been a real improvement and I'm very proud to be part of that. Thank you.
That is an understatement very well. With that being said, anything else? Adorn.